Welcome to the Catholic Entrepreneurship and Design Experience Monthly Groundwork Session. Thank you for coming. This month, we'll be digging deeper into Module Three, A Bigger Slice of Life. Think of these groundwork sessions as our small group work session. If we could be together in person, you know those ensemble, you would know those assembled here as colleagues who bring their knowledge and passion for learning to share and challenge each other. This group gathers to collaborate, share best practices, and challenge each other to not only improve how we deliver the seed material, but also to challenge the seed material itself to improve. We'll begin with a prayer, and then we'll get our hands in the mud. And know that this work will bear great fruit in the lives of our students and ourselves. I'm gonna go ahead and turn the doorbell off before we say a prayer, though. I love that sound. But there. So if you would join me, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, come, Holy Spirit, fill the hearts of your faithful and kindle in them the fire of your love. Send forth your spirit, and they shall be created, and you will renew the face of the earth. Lord, by the light of the Holy Spirit, you have taught the hearts of your faithful. In the same spirit, help us to relish what is right and always rejoice in your consolation. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. With me tonight is Professor Rebecca Teddy from Catholic University and the Seoka Center for Principal Entrepreneurship, and Professor Burgess from same Bush School of Business at Catholic University, Seoka Center for Principal Entrepreneurship. They are here to help us and be part of this community. And then very special guests this evening as we dig into Module Three, which, by the way, is the place where you will find the most econ of the entire seed program materials. It's all in Module Three. When we focus on a bigger slice of life, what we're doing is we're helping the students to learn about value creation. And so in there is a bit of econ focusing on what we call the four Ss. And essentially, those four Ss are a way to think about how entrepreneurs or what problems entrepreneurs solve, how they solve problems from scarcity, self-interest, subjective value, and then the really challenging one that entrepreneurs, that I say entrepreneurs, have to solve for themselves, sunk cost. To help us out tonight, we have some very special guests from the Foundation for Economic Education. We have, and I will introduce, and then allow her to introduce our other special guests. We have Morgan Miller from the Foundation for Economic Education. She has the title of Senior Outreach Associate at the Foundation for Economic Education. And how I would characterize Morgan is I create her to be a creative person. She is an endearing person who always follows up, which I appreciate, and does what she says she's gonna do. What she has for us tonight is a representation of their organization as a whole, Fee, which has been around a long time, folks, but also the services that they are here to offer to you as a source of help. So Morgan Miller, everybody.
So much, John. That was very flattering, and thank you for all the work that you do with Seed. It's been a pleasure to work with you and actually Luke as well. And just getting in front of more people that would benefit from all the products that we have. And one of my favorite speakers is here with us, Antony Davies. I'm gonna introduce him, and then I will let him have the floor. And then afterwards, I'll come back to speak a little bit more on some stuff that we have that I think you all would be interested in. Everything that we offer is free of charge, so it's also something that's really exciting, too. So it's all helpful and no hurtful. Dr. Antony Davies is the Milton Freeman Distinguished Fellow at Fee, Associate Professor of Economics at Duquesne University and co-host of the podcast Words and Numbers. Dr. Davies authors monthly columns on economics and public policy for the Philadelphia Inquirer and Pittsburgh Tribune Review. He has written a book on understanding statistics published by the Cato Institute and has co-authored hundreds of op-eds, among others, The Wall Street Journal, Los Angeles Times, and Washington Post. With that, I will let Dr. Davies take the floor.
Thank you. So one of the hardest things I find in teaching economics in general, let alone something specific like entrepreneurship, against a background of Catholic social thought, particularly coming from Duquesne University, which is a Catholic school. One of the hardest things is people's preconceptions that business or economics or entrepreneurship is about selfishness. It's about getting as much as I can, making a profit. And of course, in the background is this idea that if I'm making a profit, I'm gaining dollars. You're losing dollars, so therefore, I'm better off and you're worse off. This zero-sum sense of economic transactions. And it's unfortunate that that persists because it's... To say it's been largely debunked is an understatement. It comes, of course, from Marx, the labor theory of value. And Marx, for being such an interesting and intelligent person, wasn't an economist. And yet, he's held up, and people say to me outside of the business school, "Why don't you teach Marx in the economics department?" To which I reply, "Well, we'll consider it when the biology department starts teaching theology." Right? Because creationism is to biology as Marxism is to economics. And so I begin with the discussion of the labor theory of value, the idea that something is valuable because I put my labor into it is incorrect. And the simple example of that is the mud pie, apple pie. I can put two hours of labor into making a mud pie. That does not make it as valuable as the apple pie into which I also put two hours of labor. It's not the labor, but rather, the value is subjective. It comes from you and from me, that I produced this thing and I value it to some extent. And if you value it more than I do, there's the opportunity for exchange. And we both end up better off. You take the pie, I take the dollars. And we have this tendency to focus only on the dollars and to say that, "Well, I've got the dollars, therefore, I won." Ignoring the fact that you got a pie. And in fact, the pie brings to you a level of happiness that exceeds what you paid for it. And how do I know that? Because you paid for it, because you voluntarily gave me your dollars in exchange for this thing. And I think this might be the point at which it's understandable that people fall into the labor theory of value because you can see the dollars. You can see that I took them. In fact, if you can see how much I paid for the materials and the labor to produce the thing, you can see my costs as well, and you can see the number of dollars left on the table. It's very easy to measure how I benefited from that transaction. What you can't measure, not objectively like that, is the happiness that you got from the pie. You paid $10 for the pie, and it makes you so happy, you would have paid 15 if pressed. But you didn't have to pay 15, you only paid 10. You walked away with a $5 profit. Now, it's not profit in dollars, but it's profit in happiness. And in fact, if you start to think about the economy from this perspective, you realize that if the labor theory of value were correct, there would be no economy at all. There would be no reason for anybody to transact business because the pie is objectively worth $10. And if I ask you 11, clearly, you won't pay it because 11 is more than what the pie is worth. And I'm not gonna ask nine because nine is less than what objectively the pie is worth. So the only way we'll transact business is if you pay me exactly $10. But if you do that, we're both exactly as well off after as we were before. That you lost $10, but you gained a $10 pie. I gained $10, but I lost a $10 pie, in which case, there's no point in the transaction at all. So the entire economy ceases to exist if indeed the labor theory of value is correct. So what does this mean for us? What it means is when the entrepreneur earns a profit, that profit is an indication that he has provided more value to his neighbors than he asked for in return. The dollar profit that I'm accumulating as an entrepreneur is precisely IOUs. It's I have given more value to society than I asked, and the accumulation of dollars are the IOUs that society has given me, saying, "Look, you have given us more value than you asked for in return, so take these IOUs, and when you're ready to have more stuff, just give them to us, and we'll give you more goods and services." And seen from that perspective, the accumulation of profit, provided it's accumulated in voluntary exchange, the accumulation of profit is not a sign that the entrepreneur has to give back to society. It's a sign that the entrepreneur has already given to society more than he asked for in return. Seen in that perspective, the idea of economic transactions, voluntary economic transactions in community. Now, you see that they aren't contradictory. They actually come together. That when we come together in community, what are we doing? Each of us is bringing something to the table, a strength that the other ones don't have. And in return, I come with not just a strength, but also a weakness. And I seek your strength in exchange to fill the weakness that I have. The technical terms we use for this is comparative advantage, right? But that's what it is. It's the coming together of individuals in community exchanging. Are these things always... Are they perfect? No, they're not perfect because we're dealing with human beings. Is it possible for me to exploit other people? Yes, it is. I would argue, however, that's not an economic problem. It's a moral problem. And to attempt to address it with economic tools is kind of to get the thing upside down. But nonetheless, the end message I give to students to whom I'm teaching entrepreneurship or economics in general is that economics is about coming together in community with others. It's a formal way, the discipline's a formal way of thinking about how we do this. And what results at the end is that everybody is better off. Maybe not absolutely everybody, but in general, to the best extent that we can as imperfect human beings, we end up better off than we were before. And what evidence do we have of that? The world poverty rate is below 10% for the first time since human beings first existed. And to put that in perspective, in the early 1800s, late 1700s, the world poverty rate was above 95%. 95% of the world lived in what today's definition, the UN's definition of abject poverty, living on $1.90 a day or less, so $2 per person per day. Over 95% of the world lived in that state roughly 200, 250 years ago. Today, less than 10%, despite the fact that there are in order of magnitude more human beings on the planet than existed before. Does it mean everybody's better off? No, but so many of us are better off, and so much better off, that we pull the other ones that aren't better off. A good example of this is what happened with income inequality across the planet from the 1950s up to the present. If you go back, you can go back further to the early 1900s. Again, you're in the situation where virtually all of the world is living in poverty, but there's very little inequality. As time moves forward, we get up to the 1960s, you see two phenomena. One is a decent chunk of the planet, about a third to a half of us, moved out of this poverty into significant wealth, leaving the other half to two-thirds in significant poverty. So you had a situation of increased wealth for some people, but it's tremendous amount of inequality compared to what we had before. That's up until about 1960, 1970. Move time forward, and you get up to today, and those people that we left in abject poverty have now moved up. And we have the same low level of, it's not zero by any means, but the same lower level of inequality today that we had back in the 1800s, but at a much higher level of existence. Why is this so? It's so because the Industrial Revolution, entrepreneurship, took hold in certain areas of the world before other areas. And those areas pulled up, and you start to get wealth creation. And what happened? Those areas, with their newfound wealth, one of the things they did is they turned to the poorer areas and said, "What can you do for us? Well, we can produce stuff at lower cost than your people can." And we start to trade, and the trade makes these poor people wealthier. And over time, they come up, and now we have lots of people being very wealthy and relatively low in income inequality. So this is the story I give, usually what I just told you. I tell on the first day of class, to get people's heads around the fact that what we're doing here is not Satan's work. This is really about something that's wonderful, something that's good. In economics, done well is a blessing for community.
Wow. That was powerful. Thank you, Professor. That's wonderful. And exactly what this module in the seed program is about is about... It's called A Bigger Slice of Life, with the idea that the students will grow the pie, make it bigger through value creation. So when you think in... Oh, by the way, I tuned in last Friday for the first episode of Entrepreneurship in Your Living Room. Wonderful job. I thought that that hour was like the most intense boot camp for startup entrepreneurs I've ever been to, and it was so useful. So I've been thinking about that ever since, and I had prepared some questions in light of the material that we're working on. And I just wanted to thank you for coming, first of all, and then ask you about what you've been talking about, but in more specific terms, when you think about entrepreneurship and in your background as an entrepreneur, I had no idea. I was a huge Grand Theft Auto player back in the early days, so thank you for that. I've since dropped off. But when we think about just scarcity, as it is for an entrepreneur, what would be maybe some tips to give a young entrepreneur or a startup entrepreneur when you think about scarcity? Is it a myth?
Well, yes and no. I mean, things are scarce. We always want more than we have. So in that sense, it's not a myth. There is a sense in which it's a myth. And that is, I refer back to the economist Julian Simon here, who, when asked about overpopulation, "What should we do?" And his answer was, "Have more children." And what he meant by that was, human beings create resources out of things that weren't resources before. Once upon a time, the only way we heated our homes was with wood. And then we discovered whale oil, and that was way better than the wood. And then we discovered petroleum, and that was way better than the whale oil. And then we discovered nuclear fission. That was way better than the petroleum. And we're on the verge of discovering nuclear fusion, and that's gonna be way better than fission. What happens? What happens is you have human beings, you have more of them, who are smart, and they figure out these things. And we create resources out of things that weren't resources before. And in that sense, scarcity is a myth.
I have it on recording, ladies and gentlemen. Professor Davies agreeing with me and my preset that scarcity is just a myth and that we just need to drive innovation. That's what we need. We just need to stop thinking about what's limited and think about what we have and how we can help other people with it, right? Ultimately, it is how we organize these resources. And that's what the earliest definition of an entrepreneur was, one who organizes resources. So when we're doing that, as an economist and as a serial entrepreneur, how do you think about scarcity and innovation in terms of subjective value? You mentioned it wonderfully, like you said the words "as good" or "better than," right? When you were kind of going through your share there. So when you think about going forward or going to the market, what are some thoughts that you have around subjective value?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And so the strong advice I give to anyone who's thinking about becoming an entrepreneur is the successful entrepreneur is someone who thinks about others. Figure out what other people need, what they want. If you're concerned with, "How can I make a profit?", you're probably gonna fail. If you're concerned with, "How I can solve your problem, how I can make you happy?", you'll probably succeed. And in that sense, it requires, to the extent of tied into scarcity, what is it that you, my customer, are looking for? What's your pain point? And to the extent that I can help you with that, I can make your life better. And to the extent that you'll be willing to pay me to do that, and now my life is better, too.
How concise. And that's ever the problem, right? How, instead of solving individual, distinct problems, how do I go forth and help life be better, right? That's a wonderful way to think about that. And I could do this all day, everybody. If you have questions, please feel free to drop them in the chat or butt in. But ultimately, I've been prepping for this ever since I heard Professor Davies on Friday, which is an opportunity that you all have available as well. I'm sure it's not too late to get involved with this entrepreneurship in your living room. Friday's at one central standard time. So let's talk then, I'm sure that you have a background in, say, Alexis de Tocqueville, right? You've probably read a few words of the Frenchman.
I'm much less educated than what you think.
All right. I love that, right? And that's that, actually, I kind of stole this idea from Schumpeter or from Alexis de Tocqueville. That's what I call ignorance rightly understood, right? And you can use that phrase if you'd like. But when you think about self-interest, what are, again, advice for young startup, early-stage entrepreneurs, and especially their facilitators, their teachers? Everyone assembled here is working with students directly in helping them understand, "How do I apply this concept of economics and apply these specific concepts?" But when you think about self-interest, what are some words of wisdom that you would share?
Yeah. Don't confuse self-interest with selfishness. And again, this goes back to the idea that economics is not about, "What's good for me to the exclusion of everybody else." Self-interest is what it is that you want to pursue. If I am a selfish person, then self-interest and selfishness are indeed synonymous. If I'm an altruistic person, self-interest and philanthropy or altruism are synonymous. So self-interest is a kind of a fancy way of saying, "What is it that motivates me?" And again, we come back to this situation of if you have an economic system in which people are dying of poverty while other people have plenty, that's not an economic problem. It's a moral problem that people's self-interests are aimed in the wrong direction.
So if a person was gonna start a business, you know, there's always that specter of, "I would like to make some money at this." Right? I'm investing, and I'm starting this business to serve others and to help people. But there's this balance, and striking that balance... Did you ever in your life have a situation where you kind of got out of balance or were really cognizant and intentional around striking that balance between your needs and the needs of your customers?
Yeah, very much so. And you can feel it coming on because your focus turns, and you're no longer focused on your customer and what is it I can do for you? My focus becomes myself, and what can I do to make myself better? If you're an introspective person, you'll pick up on this pretty quickly. You'll see that shift, and it's the death knell for your business, whether you're a startup or whether you're an existing firm. If you start to focus on yourself as the primary rather than your customer, and the money becomes important, don't get me wrong, but it becomes important as an indicator for how well you are doing the thing you're doing. If you make it the objective, you're going to fail.
Wow. There's a wealth of wisdom in there, and I gotta hand it to you. There's no rehearsal in this, folks, but Dr. Davies just handed me the greatest segue that I could think of into our last economic concept that I want to make sure we touch on, this idea of sunk costs. And when I think about sunk costs, I'm thinking about the entrepreneur who's possibly in that moment that you just described, where maybe they've... They're experiencing some hardships in their business or their assumptions didn't prove out to be what they thought they were, or the market takes a significant downturn, and they need to make a really hard choice. Now, from a decision-making point of view, my training in economics has always been that you ignore sunk costs. Do you agree? And how do we deal with that? How do we, as entrepreneurs, handle that?
Yeah, sunk cost is something that should be ignored. Now, we could say that in a very theoretical sense. The fact is, we're human beings, and we find that hard to do, right? I think perhaps a better way to phrase it is, we should be looking forward, not backward. If you're looking backward trying to fix things that have already happened, you're gonna fall prey to the sunk-cost fallacy. Rather, look forward. And that means what? It means accepting and being happy about your successes, but also your losses, your failures, and say, "Okay, this thing was a failure. It didn't work out. I need to let go of it and look to what comes next, move forward to the future." So maybe it's the same thing that the theologians tell us about letting go. If you're a person who can let go, you're gonna be less apt to fall prey to sunk-cost fallacy.
Wonderful. You know, you mentioned that you've started some businesses, lots of success, but also some, quote-unquote, failures.
Oh, not even with the quotes. Yeah.
You said the word bankruptcy a couple of times. Would you... You obviously didn't die. It didn't kill you to have a company go bankrupt. But maybe take us back to that time, or what was that like? And what'd you learn? And how did that ultimately serve you as an entrepreneur?
Oh, it's horrible. It's a horrible thing. And I came through the end of it, and I said to my wife, "For God's sake, don't let me ever do this again." And of course, five years later, I'm doing it again, right? It's a... From one sense, in one sense, you have to get the stigma off of it because we do have the stigma about bankruptcy. If you're going to try something, and it's a new thing, that's what entrepreneurs do, there's risk and there's reward. And if you're going to be open to the fact that this could be a wonderful, life-changing thing for both you and your customers, it's also possible that it can be a life-changing thing in the opposite direction as well. And what's important, and I tell my students, is don't be afraid of risk. Be afraid of imprudent risk. So think carefully about what it is you're doing, whatever resources you have, steward them well, and if things don't turn out and you've done your best, well, that's the way it works. This is the nature of entrepreneurship. The worst part, the worst thing you can do is go bankrupt because you were squandering your resources.
So I have a question. You brought a few things together there. So could you speak to the concept of sunk costs in terms of ignoring them? The comment you just made is that, yeah, sunk costs you ignore because they're sunk. You're not dwelling on the past, but by the same token, the calculus that you use on a go-forward basis has also changed. So you may have been risking something that was worth risking in the beginning, but when your sunk costs get to a certain point, the risk is no longer worth it.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
Yeah. So I guess it would be mistaken to encourage... To the last point you made, it would be a mistaken notion to encourage entrepreneurs to go until you go bankrupt.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. You said it right. I'll paraphrase. You wanna monitor as you're moving along. So when we talk about taking on prudent risk, that's a question you have to answer every day. It's not a one-shot deal. This is a prudent risk I've been undertake this thing. Because what is prudent at the beginning may cease to be prudent at some point, and vice versa. It may be imprudent earlier on and become prudent later. But it requires constantly monitoring. I apologize, but I have to go talk to some high school students.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me here. This is wonderful. Yeah. Thank you so much, everybody. Round of applause, Professor Davies. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here.
We'll hand it back to Morgan. But prudence, ladies and gentlemen, is a virtue. And I learned today, I had this really beautiful epiphanic moment, attending a lunch and learn where we talked about virtues are economic goods, in a sense, that are not subject to scarcity, that they actually have an ever-increasing marginal utility. Get away from Dr. Davies that prudence is what we're really working on here, folks. Okay, thank you so much. Morgan, back to you.
Hey, that was exciting. So I actually always get really excited whenever Professor Davies starts talking. He usually just... He usually just takes really complex things and makes them so simple. So in the chat, I actually dropped a link to one of his full talks called Why the World is a Better Place. I've heard it all the way through. I absolutely love it. I think it's such a fresh perspective just because the world can seem sometimes just very negative and like we're reverting instead of making progress. But Davies actually makes a really great argument about why the world is actually becoming a better place. So I linked that in the chat. I also have a lot of other links in the chat. I'm so sorry. But the first one is Words and Numbers, which is actually and one of his other colleague's podcasts. He has a podcast where they frequently talk about economic principles. So I definitely wanted to share that in case you wanted to sort of stay in touch with Dr. Davies. The other links are Fee Resources, the Foundation for Economic Education, our resources. Like I said earlier, it's free of charge to use. The first link is for our shows, which takes pop culture and sort of integrates some economic theories in there as well. So some of them are usually pretty interesting and relatable to high school students. The second one in that lineup, fee.org backslash classroom, that is our link to request a one-day program or webinar. So you can actually have Dr. Davies, you know, we offer him to go to high school classrooms or, you know, speak during, you know, to students. So you can actually, you know, we offer that as well, free of charge for him to like come to classrooms and speak on really anything that teachers want to sort of have their class have a better understanding on. We don't just kind of have cookie-cutter type lectures, although we do, we do offer those as well. Like, we have a couple of our economics and government programs, sort of like prepackaged. But like I said, we also like, you know, we've not really been stumped to find one of our professors speak on like any theory or any idea that, you know, our teachers are interested in. And then also something that...
This was, we did this on purpose. This was a bespoke request to highlight for you all that this is the service that's available to you, completely free and gratis. It just takes your time and attention, that's all. So that's, okay, sorry, had to interrupt. Thank you, Morgan.
Yeah, something like, yeah, thank you, John. Like, something like what you just heard is exactly what we offer. Like, John was like, hey, like, let's talk about this, this, and this because that's what, it's covered in our module. I'm like, sweet. And so I told, you know, Professor Davies, and that's what he had for you. So our professors are amazing. I can't speak more highly of them. And then the classroom backslash entrepreneurs is what John was talking about. Our, I think it's called Entrepreneurs in Your Living Room. It's our high school kind of program. You know, John said that he attended our first one last week, I believe it was. So it's recurring, it's bimonthly. So we will have that as a recurring event that you all can join. And that link, you can sign up and get kind of notified whenever those are happening. And then our last one is the Learning Center, which we are excited about because this is another resource for teachers to use in their classroom. There's tons of stuff on there, ranging from things that are related to economics, but also things that aren't related to economics. There are articles and videos attached to that. It's basically like a one-stop shop for some supplemental things that you can use in your classroom. I also dropped my email address in case you have any other questions. You can feel free to email me. And if you want to get in touch with Dr. Davies or something like that, feel free to email me and I'll get you in touch with him if you have some specific questions for him. But if you have any questions, I'm available to sort of stick around. I know that was sort of like a lot of content, a lot of stuff. But feel free to sort of like hit me with some questions or some comments.
One big question I have, did you talk about FEECON at all?
Oh, no, we, I did not talk about FEECON. So FEECON is, we have a yearly, basically like a big event in Atlanta and downtown. So this year, we are having, as far as we know right now, we're gonna be in-person. It might be virtual. There's a good chance it actually might switch to a virtual setting. But it's for high school students and it's basically surrounding the idea of entrepreneurship. There are lots of different tracks right now, some on the environment, some on financial literacy. We actually have a lot of stuff on financial literacy, too. That's one of our like kind of specialty wheelhouses. Let me actually find that link for FEECON so you all can look at it a little bit closer. But our audience for FEECON traditionally has been young entrepreneurs, but like, you know, 20-year-olds, probably people my age. But this year, we're making a direct pivot towards high school students since our Taria audience now is 14 to 22. So that's sort of like the age that we want to really target with everything that we do is always coming back to that age. You know, high school, you know, young college freshmen. The exciting times, it's all exciting times. Life is exciting, but...
It's a perfect event for interfacing with like-minded individuals, people that are curious about economics, curious about the world, curious about applying these concepts, certainly around entrepreneurship, also educational entrepreneurship. They have, they always have this wonderful, larger-than-life human being whom I'm a huge fanboy of, TK Coleman, is a rock star and just always bringing this wisdom and enthusiasm for life and encouragement around living out your true vocation. So he, I didn't know this until just recently. He's a pastor's kid, so grew up with that in his background, but was the happy version of that story, right? So he's out there and has been involved in several educational entrepreneurial ventures. Praxis is one of them I know of right off the top of my head. But having this TK in the room is just a boost to the energy, but also a wealth of knowledge and wisdom well beyond his years, that's for sure. So want to make sure and give a pitch for that because he'll be at FEECON. And I think you shared links to, did you share a link to his, what, Revolution of One, right?
Revolution of One, oh my gosh, I love Revolution of One. Yesterday, like last night at like 10 or 11, I was just sitting there watching TK videos. So he, to say that he is really wise, like, he is. Like, that's every, every word of it is true. He's another person that we have, you know, on our staff that really can take some complex issues and just somehow break them down into something that's very understandable. And like, oh, that's so refreshing. Like, that seems, like I was watching, you know, a couple of his videos last night and it's another really fresh perspective as well. So his videos are great. You can actually request to have TK speak to your students as well. He talks a lot on entrepreneurship.
Yeah, yeah. And always has a call to action that is extremely doable, like completely available to you in this moment that you probably would have never thought to do. That's what's so, why it's called the Revolution of One, this idea that you, as an individual, will be inspired and enabled, empowered to go and do, you know, the change that you're looking to make in the world.
Yeah, like last night, I was watching one of his videos on like greatness and he was talking about like essential tasks that you need to do in order to take that extra mile. He's like, you can't go the extra mile if you don't do the essential mile. So, you know, taking care of yourself, getting enough sleep, like making sure you're doing your responsibilities that you like minimally are meant to do before you can do all this extra stuff, like making sure that you really have yourself in check before you can make that extra mile. And it seems really obvious, but also at the same time, I've never sat and like, oh, like, yeah, that makes so much sense. Like, why didn't I think of that?
Yeah. And in the hustle culture of modern entrepreneurship, we are, kind of get the feeling that we're supposed to sacrifice ourselves for the startup or for the venture or for the product or the service that you're bringing. Not true, according to TK. Not true at all, according to Catholic social teaching. You cannot pour from an empty vessel. You have to keep you taken care of, right? And that's straight out of the Gospels, very nice. Hey, guys, this is my new best friend, Morgan Miller, from the Foundation for Economic Education. And she and I will geek out, but we do have her for a little bit more time. What questions do you have? And how can we get you the answers that you're looking for? What has sparked your curiosity?
Yeah, and if I don't have the answer, I will get you the answer.
What about Elena O'Clair? Always has a great question. I will straight call you out, young lady. You're on the call, I see your smile.
Thank you very much for calling me. I guess one of the questions I have is, at the FEECON in Atlanta, how long is the conference? And then do you have themes for each year?
Yeah, so every year, well, we actually didn't do it last year because we were waiting for our 75th anniversary, which is this year, to sort of, you know, take it an extra step. But when we do have FEECON, it's three days. So this year, it's June 17 through the 19th. And before, we've sort of, we've always sort of had the theme of entrepreneurship. That's sort of something that we specialize in is like that entrepreneur mindset, that spirit, being able to take some of those principles and try to instill those in students that are really interested in starting their own business or, you know, interested in that type of thing. So this year, it will sort of center back around the entrepreneurship. But like I said before, there's also, you know, financial literacy. There's an environmental like track that you can choose. We have a lot of free-market environmentalists that, like organizations that are really great that we partner with a lot. So it always goes back around, you know, free-market entrepreneurship is really what our FEECON always centers around.
I knew you'd have a question, Elena. I knew it. I could just see it. That's just you. That's who you are. Anybody else? Thoughts, questions?
I have a quick question. This is Gina Matthews from Boston. How much lead time does a teacher-school need to have Professor Davies come to speak to them?
Yeah, so probably two weeks. It's a very kind of arbitrary timeframe. But two weeks is usually a good enough time that we can look to his schedule and make sure that he's like free or not free and just to really make sure that we have your spot, that you're interested in like that date, time, topics, like kind of confirmed and make sure there's no discrepancies with his calendar. Two weeks is usually good. I think we've probably been able to book things sooner than two weeks. But that's usually a pretty good timeframe. And it goes a lot quicker if you like, the process. The process is not very hard, basically. I can refer you to my colleague Abby Berger, which schedules programs for our teachers. And if you come with a date, a time, and a topic, she can get that turned around really quick. And that's basically all you have to do.
Gina, how cool would that be, right? Like, we're gonna blow up your schools with ECON.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah.
Cool. Well, thank you so much, Morgan. Any last words or final thoughts?
Michelle? Oh, I was gonna, sorry, I was gonna ask a question back to the KCON. So it's 14 to 22-year-olds. Do you also have, I mean, as far as parents and educators, even if you didn't maybe have someone attending, is anybody able to attend? When it's an in-person event, yeah, okay.
Sure. So in-person event, I'm pretty sure it's gonna...
Be virtual, do you think this year?
Yeah, I can't, I can't, I can't really say for sure right now because we weren't supposed to. But I feel that I can, it's probably gonna be virtual or something like that. But whenever we have it in-person, hopefully 2022, I think, you know, if you would want to come and we were planning on having chaperones if we were having it this year. So definitely, I'm imagining if we do have like sort of the same thing next year, like more than welcome to come and...
Okay, I was just curious if it was just tried to limit it to just kind of the kids or, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, if we do have it in-person by, you know, by chance, yeah, you're more than welcome to come. And especially like, you know, we were looking for chaperones, too. So if you'd wanna come in.
Good work, Michelle.
Whip those kids into shape. No, I'm just kidding.
But also, Michelle, we have, I think it's, so the link that I shared for Dr. Davies' talk, that's from our FEECON, our last FEECON. So I know that there's some more like videos floating around on YouTube of our previous FEECON, if you want to listen to those recordings.
Wonderful. Well, listen, Morgan, thank you so much. Everybody, reach out to Morgan, get in touch with Fee. If you, you can work through me if you want, but go direct. She's wonderful and totally with it. I won't completely let the cat out of the bag. We weren't sure if we were gonna have Professor Davies as recent. It's like, what, was it Friday? So, you know, it's a lot about relationships and open and clear communication about what you need. And what's wonderful is that it's yet another partner organization of Seed that is ready to help, more than willing to come to your need and serve you. So thank you so much, Morgan.
Yeah, thanks for having me. It's been really great. I get really excited about the Professor Davies. John's been amazing to work with, just also another creative mind. So it's been so fun. And so I was really excited to hop on tonight and sort of talk to you guys about what we have to offer and show you Dr. Davies because he's amazing.
Well, you are welcome to stay. Our segue right now is to dig into, one of the big pieces of feedback we get a lot here at Seed is, okay, this is great, we learned a lot. We'd like to see examples of this in action in a classroom. And what a perfect timing to be on Module Three with our friend, I always say this, our friend David Friend, right? David is, this is only his second semester as a teacher. He is a seasoned corporate businessperson entrepreneur and he thought it was gonna be a lot of fun to go and get involved at the Marin Catholic High School Principal Entrepreneurship Institute. And they are definitely getting their money's worth. But I asked David to show up and bring with him what he has done in the classroom, especially around economics and the Make-A-Meal project that is the project of Module Three. And so David, he said yes. He tends to do that. He's in that boat. And so I would love to introduce, and a lot of you know this guy, he's been around. But David's gonna take the floor and he's gonna share with us about what's going on over there at Marin Catholic.
Well, thank you, John, I appreciate it. And yeah, boy, following Professor Davies is a tough act. And what's kind of going through my mind right now is an analogy he made. You know, me teaching economics right now kind of feels like his analogy about Mark's teaching economics. It's almost two different things when you're teaching at the high school level or when you have my skill set. So with that, I thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. And boy, I've already taken a page and a half of notes just from what Morgan and Dr. Davies said. So these are all things that I'll be able to put back into my program for next year. So as John mentioned, my name is David Friend and I am the Director of the Principal Entrepreneurship Institute at Marin Catholic High School. We're located in Kentfield, California, which is just north of San Francisco. And we are part of the Archdiocese of San Francisco. My school has 800 kids, we're co-educational. And our big claim to fame is that we were the, we are the graduating school of the now Detroit Lions quarterback, Jared Goff. So I know Luke is very, very appreciative of that. So what I'm gonna do is kind of lay out the background for our class and where economics fit in So um, what, what I'm gonna do is, is kind of lay out uh, the background for um, for our class and where economics fit in and how we used Seed as kind of the scaffolding for, for our teaching in this unit. And um, we uh, we have a two-year program uh, that um, uh, starts our students' junior year. It's an application program that the students apply in. So we get a very nice, well-rounded, diverse group of students um, joining us in the Principal Entrepreneurship Institute annually. And um, we uh, we've been working on developing this program for over five years. We've really been working closely uh, with Luke and, and with John, um, and with Andreas for the last two years of, of trying to get it right. And um, we launched in the fall and um, you know, not without hiccups. I mean, we were not envisioning doing this all overseas. We were kind of hoping to be live with these kids. We developed a, or we built out a new classroom that had, you know, dry, dry erase walls and had all these great uh, features for entrepreneurs to collaborate. And uh, alas, uh, most of them have gone to very little use so far this year. Uh, but that being said, having the foundation, um, you know, provided by Seed and having the resources, and again, it's, it's almost weekly that something else is added that we can use and, and unfortunately, I'm, we're about uh, about two-thirds of the way through our school year right now. And I'm saying, rats, I wish I would have had Dr. Davies at the beginning, right? I wish I would have had this and I wish I had had that. So that's the great thing about the Seed program for us is that it's really provided us not only the scaffolding, but the resources. Um, after 32 years in business, uh, I uh, was asked to be the, our first director of the uh, Principal Entrepreneurship Institute. And um, boy, I can't tell you what a invigorating and learning experience it's been for me. Uh, I learned something uh, from the students every day. Uh, and if it's not academic, it's about life, resilience and, and growth and curiosity are all the things that I see on a daily basis. So when we went into Eca, the, this, the Module Three on Economics, um, I tried to put myself back in the um, in the student's shoes and back at that age. Uh, when uh, we kind of developed it out, out some of the goals. So um, our course is, like I said, is a two-year course and um, but the amount of material that we want to cover, both with, with the Seed program and then also with, we wanted to add in um, uh, to the program as well. Boy, I feel like every day the, the clock is ticking and I just don't have enough time. Um, because our objective really is to survey this information with the students. We, we had some great advice from uh, from Luke at the very beginning. We had some great advice from some of our uh, university partners at Notre Dame and Santa Clara University. They said, you know, get the students interested, get the students involved, get the students so they're speaking the language of entrepreneurship. We'll take it from there, right? So, so make sure they're familiar with these topics. That took a lot of the pressure off because I, I look at Dr. Davies speak about economics and I'm like, whoa, right? Uh, this is, you know, this is fabulous stuff. And there's so much more there. But if you're treating it as a survey, like we are, and I'm not, I'm not recommending it one way or another. I'm just saying in entrepreneurship class, if you're treating it as a survey, um, there are, it does take a little bit of the pressure off to get, you know, get, you know, 20,000 leagues deep on any of these topics. So for us, our objective was to have them understand some of the basics and fundamentals around economics. Stop, period. So um, that uh, that being said, the second thing, so that's, it was the kind of the institutional goal. The personal goal was I was a student, you know, at, at UC San Diego, majoring in economics. And I remember I went and sat in my first Economics Four class with Dr. Mark Machina. So you can tell I remember this. It was a long time ago. And he started lecturing on economics and I thought that I had wandered into a class on Greek. I, 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 I could not understand a word that the, this professor was saying. And, you know, I had taken my high school economics class and it was, I, I think it was a home economics class. That might have been my problem. I, I just didn't, I, I really just didn't even know the language that, that the professor was speaking. So one of my goals was, was to make sure they knew the language, right? And then my second um, goal was to introduce them definitionally to the concept. Knowing that they would be picked up by a Dr. Davies or be picked up by another learning opportunity somewhere down the line where they could get more information on this. But I just didn't want my students to be me in 1984, sitting in Econ Four saying, oh my goodness, I, I have no idea what they're saying, right? I want them to at least know the language. Um, so a couple of things about the Seed program as we went into this. I um, I always say that I, I love the flexibility of the program, but I don't want to imply that it's a buffet, that you just kind of pick and choose what you want, because I do think there's a certain continuity to um, to the teachings in each one of these modules. So while I have modified some of them, I have not trashed anything, meaning that I have not taken, I, I, I won't talk about some of the things that are in Module Three. That doesn't mean we're disregarding them. It means I may have taken it and moved it to another area of our two-year program. So I just don't want there to be miss, any misunderstanding there. I think everything in Seed is great, it's something, but it gives you the flexibility to kind of move those Lego parts around a little bit. So don't be thrown off if you say, well, wait a minute, didn't, I, I read Module Three and David didn't talk about this. I'm probably teaching it in a different section or taught it previously. So those are kind of the ground rules on this. So um, so um, okay, so let's see my notes here. Um, yeah. Oh, and another thing, our, our students also as part of the found, uh, the institute are required to take microeconomics in their senior year. So again, that takes a little bit of the pressure for me off. Okay, so um, for this, this project, uh, we preceded it with an in-class speaker. So I'm, I'm just gonna, let me just see, I have the share screen capability, yeah, okay. Um, I just wanna fly up the lesson plan here real quick, just so you can get an idea of what it looked like. And again, for you teachers out there, please don't be insulted by my um, lesson plans. I, I, I'm a business person at heart and I'm learning lesson planning, so um, um, you, I, you look and say, oh my goodness, he's a teacher and he's using this as a business plan. For now, I, I'll grow in that space. So we had, um, I said, we, we had three courses that we uh, went over. The first uh, one was we had a uh, interview speaker with a uh, a top economist, Matt, uh, Matt Johnson uh, from the London School of Economics. And uh, he spoke, uh, hi, his topic was Economics for Entrepreneurs. In our second class, uh, we did, um, you know, we kind of set out our, our learning, which was the Make a Meal uh, uh, lesson, but we also had a speaker and I'll, I'll talk about how that speaker worked into the program as well. And then the third thing is we, we reviewed um, our Make a Meal. We watched our, our Flipgrid videos and we discussed it and journaled on some of the learnings around economics. So that's kind of what the um, that kind of, that is exactly what the uh, the lesson plans look like. So uh, what uh, Dr. Johnson spoke about, uh, and it was similar, but I would say probably a little bit more foundational uh, than Dr. Davies uh, speech, speech, just about economic terms. So he spoke about uh, the notion of value creation and specifically on creating value for others. Okay, so that was kind of the first part of his um, his presentation. The second part wa, was he introduced uh, the foundations of uh, the foundational terms of economics, things like land, labor and capital. What are those? And where do they, why, why are they the foundations of economics? He then talked about the four S's. We talked about scarcity, self-interest, subjective value and sunk cost. Okay? So we laid the foundational terms out and defined them for the students. Um, the next class was the Make a Meal. And to do that, we, we had two things. And one, we wanted to start tying some of these economic terms to actions. What do they look like in action, right? And the Make a Meal um, exercise, as you know, is an exercise in putting those economic terms into action. So what we did is we first thought, well, wait a minute. How do these kids even know anything about cooking a meal, right? I mean, they're in Marin County, when the wealthier counties in, in, in California, and I'm sure that their moms don't want them in the kitchen very often because of the disasters they make. So we asked our um, our own cafeteria chef to come in and speak to the students. And she, uh, you know, Lisa Hines talked about sourcing of materials, budgeting, kitchen management, preparation and service and cleanup. So just kind of the basics of how do you put together a meal? And she, while she was doing that, we had her on Zoom from the Marin Catholic Kitchen and she was making a very simple meal while she was talking to the students. It was, it was awesome. I didn't even know we had this resource and she is a natural. So it was great to have her come speak to our kids. Um, we then laid out, um, oh, and, and I, I also just want to mention, there's two other resources that we used in putting these together. The first one was, again, these are in your Seed, um, in your uh, Seed curriculum. The uh, the YE Academy Four S's video. Must watch. Uh, second one is the Catholic Social Doctrine uh, paper that uh, is also linked in, in um, in Module Three. So um, our students received instructions on kind of the ground rules of the meal. And so we talked about that in class. And then um, what we also did, I just want to make sure, uh, what we also did was we asked them to all do it on a specific day so that you know, on a Friday and that way by Monday, we could be looking at, at the videos in the class. And what we did is the assessment, instead of assigning a test and we're having them write a paper about it, we asked them to do, uh, and let me share this. Uh, we asked them to have one of the participants in the meal do a Yelp review uh, of the, of the meal, okay? And just a two-minute Yelp review. And the questions that they were to ask the um, uh, the participants, so whoever they cooked for, whether it was a family member or a family friend. We didn't want, like, you know, friends to do it, and particularly with you know, some of the county guidelines on social distancing. We didn't want students cooking for other students or anything. So um, we asked them to uh, you know, prepare the meal, um, and then ask one of the participants uh, about the meal and do a review. So what were the material or, were the materials uh, procured by the student? Land, right? The uh, of land, labor and capital. Was preparation, service and cleanup arranged or executed, executed by the student? The labor portion of it. And then were the finances for the meal provided or arranged by the student? Capital, right? And then um, you know, under the uh, all-important heading of uh, creating value for others, how well was the meal executed? You know, from procurement to preparation to service and to cleanup? And what was your overall score on a scale of one to five? Because of course, if you're doing a Yelp review, you have to score it, right? So uh, and that was the grade, right? If they turned in a Yelp review that had all those questions answered, that was the grade for their um, the assessment. So a little bit different. It was, you know, as you might imagine, a little bit uh, of a lighter unit, but um, we had some fun with it. So what I'll do is I'll show you one of the reviews.
Hi, I'm Emma. This is my mom.
Hi there.
And um, tonight for dinner for her, I made a version of classic cubed beef stew. And so I made browned and seasoned steak cubes with sauteed onions and garlic with carrots, celery and tomatoes. And then I did a reduction with beer and beef broth, which means that I let it all like sit and then it creates a sauce. And then after that, I put on the wort salad sauce.
I'm doing a review of Emma's excellent meal. We went grocery shopping together um, to get the food and that was fun. Um, the, it was all executed by Emma. Um, she had to stir everything every 15 to 20 minutes, so she did, that was awesome. Um, and all the dishes were in the dishwasher um, before we sat down to dinner. So for preparation, so I thought that was great. We did have to remember to put the silverware and drink um, at dinner, but otherwise than that, everything was excellent. Nice service and fantastic taste. Also, um, we should do this weekly. Bye bye.
Okay, so um, anyway, so you see, it was some fun too. And again, I checked a lot of boxes for us in that it was family time. It was, you know, kind of creative and fun. Like I said, it was a lighter assessment for a heavier topic. Um, the next day, you know, we uh, were able to show, let me see here, uh, we were able to uh, have students present uh, their findings on, on the meal, show their video and talk about the experience and how it tied back to some of the economic um, uh, uh, topics that we had, we had covered, particularly around the four, the four S's. So let me see if I have any other notes here. Um, anyway, that was our experience with, and I said it from the beginning, a portion, uh, but a fun portion of uh, of Module Three. So I'll, I'll stop there and I'll see if there's any questions. And, and more than that, any thoughts? Because like I said, this is my first year through and um, I'd love to improve this next year. And I already have a couple with Dr. Davies and things like that, but I'd love to hear from anybody in the call who has some thoughts on improvement as well. So.
I just wanted to share, I love the idea that how, of how you use, you guys use the Flipgrid and the, the video portion. I think that's an easy way to document the fun. So I know my son will eat that up, so thank you for sharing.
You, you bet. Yeah, no, that, that, again, it made a heavy topic. And economics during the discernment portion of uh, the curriculum, it could be kind of a heavier, you know, little drier topic sometimes, but they had some fun with it. And that, yeah, I think that's the important thing is that they got to tie together these heavier terms with things that they do every day. So we're not cooking every day, but you know.
David, I had made up a story in my head that you used a Yelp style review, but it looks like you actually had the reviews on Yelp. Is that right?
No, so we, we, I styled the page to look like a Yelp. Like you, in Flipgrid, you have a lot of flex far, far as adding icons and things like that. So I added the Yelp icon in and then fashioned the page so that it kind of mirrored what a Yelp review would look like.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted, I have two comments. One is for John first. Um, for those of you who don't know, my daughter is at Catholic right now and took this course last semester with John on campus. And she did not have this assignment. I was not cooked for. Point number one.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah. Um, but point number two is, David, as you were talking, um, I, I couldn't help but envision when you said that you had the cafeteria come up to speak about preparing food and whatnot. I can also envision, and I, and I sent this to um, Dave Gilpin, I know is from Boston as well. I sent this to Dave. We have homeless shelters in Boston, as many of us all, you know, do in our cities. And I can also see this being a wonderful opportunity to get students to speak with those kitchen managers and to have a service opportunity tied to it. And and how does this all fit together in the larger scheme of we are servants of the Lord and we are here to help others? You know, going right back to Professor Davies' message about we are servants. And so, you know, how do we do that? And I can see this, your whole lesson tying right into that so easily.
Yeah, and, and you know, Gina, I, I couldn't agree with you more. And I really look forward to opportunities when we get to do that again, and, and, and take creative ideas like this. I will tell you that um, as you go through these modules, you'll find out that so many more boxes can be checked than just the ones that are in front of us. You know, things like the humility, like these kids eat, eat, you know, eat the food from this cafeteria every day. And I doubt they knew who Lisa Hines was before that. Now they do, and now they know. She's really funny and she's engaged and she loves them. And, you know, and those are all just like the little boxes, check, 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 that we get out of doing these sorts of exercises. So couldn't agree more.
And the, the dignity, right? So Lisa probably is always thought of or, you know, runs the risk of being the lunch lady, right? Now she, they've had a personal encounter and truth-seeking dialogue around the process of being an entrepreneur in a kitchen, serving them. What, that's, I, I think that's just brilliant.
And she's a teacher to them, right? I mean, she's not a lunch lady. She's a, you know, she's
A human being that creates value that, that, you know, probably would love, I would love to know, um, you know, like how do they, now that they've gone through the project, how do they think about, you know, they obviously think differently about Lisa after they encountered her. But now they've gone and tried to do the same. but now they've gone and tried to do the same work, right? And, and that appreciation for having, like Anthony said, right? Like walking a mile in their shoes and being prepared for that. Or I guess Morgan said that. Who else? What else? What are your thoughts? Dave, what are you thinking?
I'm just trying to think about what Gina was just talking about with the, with the homeless shelters. You know, I've taken kids down to Westerly, Rhode Island on a service trip for a couple of years ago now. And we were working inside the soup kitchen and we had a budget. And, you know, I had a group of 12 kids with me. And, you know, we had to go to the store to, you know, to cook in the kitchen and plan, do the meal and everything. And there's a really great bonding experience with the kids. I mean, it wasn't, and we got rave reviews. I mean, our Yelp reviews would have been, you know, off the tracks. They would have been awesome. But I'm just trying to think, you know, you know, to bring that a little bit closer home to Boston, the way that Gina was just talking about, for sure, I think that's a, it's a great idea.
Well, I, I love a good idea. I'll take a note on that and, boy, that would be awesome.
Well, any other thoughts or questions for David?
Elena, do you cook for your mom often?
I had a feeling that was going to come up. Yes, mother, how does it taste?
How about the kitchen afterwards? How's the kitchen after?
Oh, I love washing dishes, a lot.
I was watching you guys when that came up and I saw Diane look at you. You didn't, you didn't see, but she looked at you.
You had a question?
Um, with the Yelp reviews, were there any other feedback outside of the food tastes great? I mean, the more intangible, I suppose. She said, you know, like the setting or the, I mean, anything else outside of the, the food tastes good.
Right, and, and good, good pickup there because that's the area where I think I need to work on more for next year. I think that the questions that I put into the instructions were too prescriptive. They were too specific. It didn't give the students an opportunity to talk about the experience from a more authentic standpoint. I provided, because they felt like, okay, there's five questions. This project is worth five points, so I need to ask these five questions, right? So I, I've got to think about for next time. I do want to elicit, did they, you know, did they do all the preparation? You know, did they, you know, did they finance it? Did they source the material, you know, because that's the capital part of it? How did they, how did they source it? And then, you know, did they do the labor? You know, did they, did they produce something? Did they provide value for someone else? So, yeah, that is something I'll, I'll work on for the next unit. But I thought, you're right, I, I think that was kind of a miss for us this time. That was the one area I want to improve.
So I, I, I think that was the rubric you gave in, in your lesson plan and your explanation was helpful for me in terms of, you know, I have, we're thinking about doing the class in the fall. But I thought that, you know, when I thought about the previous discussion related to, you know, the economic side of it, et cetera, and then you tying it in with the Yelp, I was thinking, you know, a meal is just, that's just one part. You know, I'm thinking you can send invitations. You can ask them to get dressed up. You can have candles. You can have ambiance, right? You can, you can have music playing, right? You can do a bunch of other things that if you think about going to a really nice restaurant, there's a lot of other things other than the food itself, which if you're on a very tight budget of what you're spending, those other things matter if the, if there's napkins and water on the table and, and those other things. And so I just think it was, it, it helped me to more crystallize, you know, talking about this in terms of having kids do a meal and, and expressing it in terms of, well, it's not just eating. There's other things that relate to that that could overcome the economic side.
My point was that my daughters do cook for me, but sometimes they don't taste exactly how I want it to taste, but because they take special effort in making sure the plates and the utensils, and they would even put a vase of flowers. I mean, they make it look nice. So the value for me is still high, even though the food was not good. So I figured in this exercise, when we're talking about value, they still would have gotten a pretty, you know, four or five for me, even though the food was a fail. Okay, so if you do get.
Elena, cleanse yourself.
She has another daughter.
And so David, if you do come up with how to write it out so that we can, you know.
I'll definitely, I will share.
Did anybody get, did anybody get negative feedback, David?
What's that?
Was, did anybody get negative feedback? I know the mom that you showed hinted a little bit, but like, did anybody get roasted by their parents or who they cooked, cooked for?
No, uh, no, nothing really stands out as, as a roast. I'm sure there was some, I, I know there was some fun jibe, jibes here and there. But nobody, nobody, because let's face it, part of the box, one of the boxes that was checked there was family time, right? They had to slow down on a Friday night and get a meal cooked by their, their children. And it was all part of a school project. And they got to Yelp review it. It's like the trifecta of fun, right? So, you know, learning, family time, you know, it really, so no, nobody really got roasted in it, so.
Well, I love, I can imagine there's that little, that little bit of, you've got to get it in there, right? That's, that's how my family operates. Like if they're not jibing you, it's because they're mad at you, you know?
Yeah, we had, one, one student's sister did it and there was a couple of jibes there. The dads were always kind of throwing a couple of barbs in there, but the moms were always just appreciative, so.
And moms just love.
Yep.
Shannon, what you got?
I'm just wondering, David, how did the kids source this? I mean, I know somehow, I mean, my high schooler works. And did you ask the kids just to use their own means or did they raise money or?
Good question. And again, that's, I think we're all going to have to provide more specificity for them because most of the answers I got to that question as far as capital, it, they weren't clear on where the money came from. And I told them that they can either borrow for it, but if they borrow for it, they need to have a plan to pay it back. They can fund it from their own finances, or they can raise money for it. They, three different ways to, to, to pay for that meal. I think the way I asked the question, I didn't get that answer back during the Yelp review. So I'm going to have to tune that, that question a little bit better.
That's always, Shannon, that's always been my big question when we deploy this module. It's like places where maybe your, your, your social economics, you know, status doesn't really allow for, you know, the, the kids to go out and buy meals. Like we, we always got to keep that in mind. One of the things I wanted to mention, after the training happened in December, we did go back and, and add back the directions around if, if you want to do this kind of more of a, as a hypothetical, using the, the government SNAP guidelines, right? So we, we did add that back into the modules in the written material that you can access that. But I love just kind of true to seeds nature, lots of options, lots of ways for this to be done. And God bless you, David, friend. Thank you for, for doing this for me and for us. Among all the other things that's, that's happening, you know, in your life and your, your family and your school. Thank you so much for putting this, this presentation together. You certainly delivered all the value that I had hoped for. And I know you have a hard stop and, and we're coming up on time. So thoughts and, and questions from everybody? David put his email in the, in the chat too.
And again, John, I, I appreciate the opportunity and I really, more than that, appreciate the feedback. Because like I said, I'm already working on these modules for next year and I got several very good ideas and I'll share out with you as I. And if you guys have better ways to elicit, you know, through questions on that Yelp, I am all ears. I, I know pride and ownership there. I, I love it. And so Shannon, if you come up with something that you think can elicit, I, I'd love to, love, love to grab it from you. So I got a, I got a boogie. Thank you, guys. We'll take care.
Thank you, David. Okay, so David, thank you. Everybody, thank you for being here. Couple, couple pieces and parts of the module as well. There's my favorite, absolute favorite game to play in the realm of economics and entrepreneurship is rooted in Block One, to play the game Pit. However, that is best played in person. So, you know, mask up, wash those hands, but I, you know, the exchange of cards, there's surfaces in, in abundance and just, I can't imagine right now what it would be like to try to play Pit in person. But that is there for a reason. That game is, is one way to provide all the context that you would need for, for speaking about economics because you're establishing a marketplace in your classroom and then you're creating a monetary currency, a fiat currency in your classroom. And then it marks and measures its value by hosting an auction at the end of that lesson. So right now, I know that kind of activity is a little bit on pause, but if you are in a situation where you would want to do that, and I, I myself struggled with it conceptionally until I had played it several times. And now it's one of my favorite things to do. So if you're at a place where you're not really sure, but you'd like to try it, let me know. It would be my pleasure to, to do a, just a quick consult and help you understand how it goes. There's a ton of video out there, but I, I do recognize that that's a little bit of a, there's some intellectual growth around it, especially when you can't just play. Like you, if we could just play, you would see, you know, how it works. But we, we're kind of in a place where we can't really do that. But I wanted to tip our, our hat to that. Hello, young sir. Welcome to the call. Oh, my gosh. I love, hi. I love it. Dave, who's your guest?
Sorry about that. This is, this is Leo. And he's going to be four years old tomorrow.
Oh, my God. Happy birthday, dude.
Please said happy birthday, but he's going to bed, so he's just, sorry about that.
Have a good night, Leo. No, no, we're, we're about to wrap up, so thank you all so much. I do want to introduce to the group, this is Rick Costello. Rick is the brave soul that is pioneering the seed facilitator training process on the platform called Basecamp. We've built out the training to live to where it can be self-directed. So those of you that joined us in December for two days, thank you so much for, for being there and, and being the first. Now we have another first in Rick Costello. He's an entrepreneur. He and his wife, they are both entrepreneurs. And one of, you know, reading his work that he's turning in for his training program, I want to know this person even more every day. So Rick, thank you for doing that. And if, if we don't have any more thoughts or questions or concerns, anything you want to, you know, use me for, let me, help me live my, out my vocation by serving you. So thank you so much for coming. May God bless and keep you all. Have a beautiful Lent and we will see you again. You're welcome to come to the fireside chat on the third Thursday of the month, but hopefully we'll see you again at the next groundwork session where we get into Module four. And I can tell you, that's where we start getting into the design thinking process and it's going to be fun. So we've got it all built already and we're going to, actually, I'll, if you want, we're going to do a piece of the footwear design challenge from Module four. So if you want to take a look in there, you can study up and see how it goes and see what you're in for. And now that I've told you what is going to happen, you'll be here of your own volition. So that's wonderful. All right, friends. Thank you so much. We'll share the video of this with everybody and we'll just keep you in our thoughts and prayers. Be blessed. Have a wonderful evening.